Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're going to call this meeting to order. And if we could stay standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Hattman, would you do roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Counselor Duncan Castor, present. Counselor Ema, present. Counselor Farr, present. Counselor Gibson, here. Counselor Kingsbury, present. Counselor Robb, present. Counselor McKay, present. Counselor Miller, here. Warden Murphy, here. Counselor Becker, present. Counselor Ryan Hall, present. Counselor Robinson, present. Counselor Stack, here. Counselor Sweet, present. Counselor Vadeskemore, here. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there any disclosure of the community and trust or the general nature that we have this morning? Seeing none, can I have an adoption of the minutes of our March 29 County Council meeting? Moved by Counselor Love, seconded by Counselor Businesske Moore. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Excellent. As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council in our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the all of the people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Members of county council, during the month of April, I attended sixteen meetings on county business. On March 31st, I attended along with Counselor Love, a meeting with parliamentary assistant to the Minister of Energy, the Honorable Bob Delaney, who had introduced the Ontario Fair Hydro Plan earlier that day. On April 6th, I continued taping information segments with Pocico. Topics of discussion included the Vimy 100 Anniversary Parade in Petawawa, municipal budgets and taxation, AMCTO's research paper on the review of provincial reporting by municipalities, Taste of the Valley, and long-term care funding events. On April 9th, I attended along with many members of county council, the 100th anniversary of the Battle of Vimy Ridge Parade held at the Garrison Book Hall held at the Civic Center in Petawawa. Members of county council had the honor of completing a military inspection. Thank you for all of those that came out and for including your spouses as well. On April 21st, I attended along with CAO Jim Hutton and past Chair Peter Ema, a meeting of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. On May 1st, the OWC will be attending a breakfast meeting with the federal MPs from Eastern Ontario. Topics of discussion will be partnering and collaborating with the federal government, priorities for the rural eastern region, digital infrastructure, Eastern Ontario regional network update, and the Selgab project, and the $2 billion dollar infrastructure funding through municipalities. Also, as part of the meetings, discussion was held on Bill 68, Modernizing Municipal Legislation Act, and an update was provided of the Eastern Ontario Leadership Council. On April 22nd, I attended the 2017 Annual General Meeting of the District 2 Eaganville Area Horticultural Society, held at the Rankin Center, and I confess that I had actually killed a cactus once. On April 25th, I attended along with CAO Jim Hutton, the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Conference, an annual general meeting held at Spectacle Lake Lodge. Later today, I will be attending the Mirriwshie Lodge Volunteer Recognition Dinner, where approximately 150 volunteers will be honored. On April 28th, I will bring greetings on behalf of county council on the opening of the new location of the Training and Learning Center in Eaganville. I will remind those assembled here of the following: The County of Redford, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. Thank you. And this morning, we've got our first delegation, Mr. Chris Hydeman from River and Hydeman Sons, to overview the expansion, so I would invite my neighbor, Chris Hydeman, literally my neighbor, Chris, to come up and dazzle us with what your company will be doing in the next year and a half.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Aaron, for the invite today. So, just going to start with a quick intro to the company. My grandfather started in 1976 with his four sons and built one sawmill at its current site in Bonshire Valley. And 1997, we built a second sawmill. So, we have one sawmill that saws big diameter logs, 10 inches and up, a second sawmill gears more towards smaller diameter logs. They're both on the same site. In 2014, we acquired international lumber just across the river here in Pembroke. In 2015, we increased our crown wood supply substantially, which brings us to where we are today with our current project. At the moment, we directly employ, this week's payroll had 102 pay stubs on it, and just one thing to add to that is, those are direct employees at the mills in here in Pembroke. There's almost that many again that deliver wood, and contractors outside trucking, harvesting, stuff like that. With sawmills, you can pretty much double the amount of direct employment that they have at their mills. So, just quickly, where we stand today, we're basically a fully integrated company today. So, we started off, my grandfather and my uncles and my father, cutting trees in the bush, built a sawmill, produced rough green lumber. Today, we have a number of different branches within the company. We have a forest management branch, which looks after everything from private land agreements, if people have questions about how to manage their forests, assist with that. We have a few of our own harvesting teams working out there. Most of it is contracted out, but we do have some of our own. We have the sawmills in Eaganville, we have the planing mill and distribution yard here in Pembroke. So, we manage everything now, right from the silviculture, right from managing the forests, from the time trees are planted or seeds take root, right through to when that board shows up in the store. So, for the current project, this is an aerial view of the site as it sits today. I guess the first issue, it's been well publicized, and we actually started about ten years ago investigating what we could do to get more hydro, more power transmission capabilities to our site. That was what was really holding us back from expanding all along. So, it was actually with the assistance of the Redford County Community Futures Development Corporation that we completed a planning, design, engineering study for what it would take to get a new 44 KV transmission line out to our site. We are rural business, but sawmills belong out in the country. We don't make great neighbors in cities, but if we want to run sawmills in Redford County outside of cities, we need to get power to them. So, and construction has started. You probably noticed the holes being dug, Warden, on a dedicated 44 KV line from the Golden Lake Distribution Station to our mill. It's about 13.4 kilometers long. This allows us to move forward with our current expansion now, but it also opens up opportunities in the future. And it's meaningful right up from Golden Lake to Palmer Rapids. I live on the line, Warren lives on the line, and it's one of the longest and oldest transmission lines in the province. So, for residents and other businesses along the line, getting us off of it will be noticeable. It also opens up further opportunities for other businesses to come into the area, because right, we couldn't add a light bulb at our place because the line was maxed out. So, this really opens up opportunities for the area for other businesses and will improve the service to residences along the line. So, construction started at the site, some site prep over the winter. We're spending $16.9 million at the site here in Eaganville, and there's a $4 million of that is in the form of a loan through the Provincial Jobs and Prosperity Fund. The first thing going in will be... There's kilns going in. Right now, this is Foymount Road up here. This is the original mill built in '76, that's the mill built in '97. There's dry kilns, there'll be cement being poured within a couple weeks back in this area here. So, they'll be starting up, we'll be drying lumber at this site in June 2017. Right now, here in Pembroke, we don't have kilns, we're air drying everything. There's a 123 bin automated sorting line, which will run, the building will run 600 feet long here and cut the yard in half. So, that automated sorting and stacking line will start up in December 2017. The original 1976 mill is going to be torn down, and there's a new large log sawmill being built attached to this existing mill in that area right here. That's going to start up in May 2018. And then, in this area down here below this picture, there's a new planing and distribution remanufacturing facility being constructed, and that's going to start up in August 2018. So, all the equipment is ordered, things are underway, the transmission line is being built, so it's definitely exciting times for our company. To touch on the impacts on employment, there's going to be a minimum of 18 new jobs created with the project. Doesn't sound like a lot, spending that kind of money and increasing our production by 60%, but it's significant in that if we don't do this, five years from now, there'd probably be zero jobs on that site. It's one of those things where we have to either run the equipment into the ground and disappear, or take that step and move forward and figure out a way to compete on the market. All of our employees here in Pembroke, we are consolidating our Pembroke and Eaganville operations. All of our employees here in Pembroke have been offered jobs at the Eaganville site, and happy to report that it seems like most of them are coming, which we're very happy to hear. There are going to be significant changes to the jobs. We are eliminating the most physically strenuous jobs in Eaganville. There's 15 green lumber piling jobs that'll be eliminated, but there'll be further jobs added in the value-added processes and packaging finished goods and stuff like that. So, it expands our labor pool from which we can draw to, we're limited for certain jobs to people with certain abilities, whereas we'll be able to provide a wider range of jobs to a wider range of the labor pool. There'll also be an increase in the average wage after the expansion is complete, and we'll add about $1 million to our payroll over the next couple years as a result of this expansion. These are a few of the associations and organizations that we're partnered with. Just to speak quickly to some of the benefits to the county from this project, aside from the multiplier effect from our expenditures and the new value-added activities, there'll be improved electrical distribution to our line, but it also, that power is coming from Cobden, which gets the power from somewhere else, so all the way down the entire distribution system, there'll be impacts by the new line that we're building. It'll open up opportunities in other areas aside from just in Bonshire Valley and just along that F3 feeder. Increased harvest levels, we're going to be processing 60% more volume of sawlogs than what we are today. And we don't process certain species at our site, but other mills in the valley do. The pulp will go to pulp mills, the MDF plant, we ship most of our chips, sawdust, and bark there. They're critical to the success of this project. Without their reopening, this project would not be happening. There's just no other way to put that. So, the county forests, the volume of wood that you supply to our area industry, it is meaningful and it is significant. And along with that, the importance of the messaging that comes out of the way you manage your forests, the sustainability, the multi-stakeholder use, all that stuff, it resonates throughout the province. And so, your forest, along with providing us fiber, you're doing a great job of getting that message out there on sustainability and stuff like that. So, industry appreciates it, and it's critical, and it all makes projects like this possible in this area through your work along that lines. So, that's all I had about our project. I don't know if you want questions now or wait until after the industry update? It's up to yourself, Warden.
I'll open it up to questions now. I did have one, and I'm sure it's burning in lots of people's brains about the proposed tariff increase by the US government that just came about in the last couple of days, and how that will affect all of your projects.
So, for us right now, we're currently not directly exporting any softwood lumber to the US. In fact, most of the products that are produced here in Redford County and the species of trees that grow here, there's actually more US wood coming into Ontario than what there is going out of Ontario in our, like, white pine, our red pine, oak and maple, which isn't impacted by these duties. But, so, directly, there's no impact. That being said, though, we're extremely integrated, our industry throughout the province. So, we are concerned that there'll be closures up north. What impact that has on the pulp mills and the trickle-down effect remains to be seen. So, we are being cautious about that, and so, we're fortunate. It's one of the good things and the bad things in Redford County is the diversity of our forest and the number of different species we have. Makes it very expensive to extract the wood, but it also does shield us a little bit from the fluctuations that go on with the commodity-driven SBF markets.
Thank you. Anything further for Mr. Hydeman, Counselor Businesske Moore?
Hi, Chris. Congratulations to you and your family. Well done.
Thank you.
I'm surprised I hadn't heard about this, because, you know, we're all, like you said, we're all partners in the same business, but I think this is wonderful, and I wish you and your family the best. Your business has been part of Redford County for so many years, and that's what is the meat of Redford County, is family-run businesses that continue to go generation to generation. So, I truly do have to congratulate you and your family, and good luck. And I'm just a small piece up here, but if there's anything I can do, I want you to know that I want to help anyway. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Sweet.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Chris, for your presentation. Just a little bit of history, when I pushed into the Ottawa Valley, I opened up the business here in town, and one of my customers was your grandfather, Aaron Hydeman. And I'm, just by way of comment, I used to enjoy very much when he'd come in because he was one of our bigger customers at that time. And so, I just want to say congratulations to you, as the journalist has indicated, that you would be extremely proud of what the family has accomplished today, and you have to be congratulated with that. That's a major, major investment in one of the major pillars of our economy, which is logging or forestry as such. One of the questions, though, if I could, Warden, to ask, you talked about pulpwood and moving pulpwood, which was always a bit of an issue, cutting down the sawlogs, et cetera, and the residual of pulpwood, et cetera. How far afield do you have to take that pulpwood? Now, at one time, of course, and that's years and years and years ago, you had Porash, and that was a big place where that, but that's no longer a viable situation. So, how far do you have to travel with the pulpwood to meet and administer this regulation?
Yeah, pulpwood still remains a concern this day in Espinola, Temesquemang, Thurso. So, we are going significant distances, Englehart. So, it's, especially in the roundwood form, a lot of that is traveling a significant distance.
Anything further, Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Warden, and Chris, my congratulations. I think you've done an excellent job of showing us how one large project has so many tentacles that spread throughout the county and basically raised the whole industrial level of the county. So, thank you for that. It was very well described.
Thank you, and we really are integrated significantly. Rob's going to be speaking, half of our product ends up in Cumbermere. All of us mills around the valley exchange products, logs back and forth. We no longer saw all the species like we did 15 years ago. We focus on four or five, other mills focus on others. It's extremely integrated, and that's by being able to harvest more wood on the land base, it'll mean more wood available for the other industries within the valley.
Anything further? Well, I'm, obviously, I'm a little biased with this project. Not only does it obviously benefit Bonshire Valley, but I guess I won't have brownheads at my house anymore when you fire up the mill. I think the Hydeman's were pretty pleased when we moved in next to them, because being from Toronto, we actually like the sound of the mill. We like the white noise. So, truly an exceptional project, and we're so pleased that you're going ahead with it, Chris. I remember, when he told me, I welled up, I was so excited, for the family and for all of us. I think this is an excellence, as Counselor Businesske Moore and Counselor Sweet, various students said, you know, you have these family businesses, and to go from generation to generation is just wonderful. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, I will turn it over to Craig Kelly to introduce our next delegation.
Thank you, Warden. It's indeed my pleasure, but to introduce the next speaker, but before we do that, I'd like to acknowledge on behalf of staff, David White, and Alister Bear, of course, work very closely with the forestry industry, but want to thank Counselor Jim Gibson, of course, for his participation in the committee, and thank you again for your support that way. So, next to speak is Rob Burson, who I know well, Passway is near my neighbor, but I know that Rob's a great musician as well, and these guys are more than just business owners, these guys also help and ladies in our neighborhoods as well. So, although Passways is located in Manawaska Valley, Rob's a resident of Killu Hagby Richards, but an amazing volunteer with his family and the outdoor rinks and otherwise in Killu and Manawaska Valley. So, congratulations to Rob and his family for just being great ambassadors of business in the area. So, Rob is the Operations Manager for Passway Planning, again, in Cumbermere, now with Division of Canwell Corporation. And I'm sure you give a bit of a background, I think he was purchased a couple of years ago from Ray Passway. Rob is also this year's Chair for the Redford County Forestry and Wood Added, or Value-added Wood Economic Development Committee, which is now the longest committee, I think, we have, so I'm proud of that. And Rob's going to give a high-level overview of the initiative as it stands. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for those kind words, Craig. You almost made me cry.
Don't cry, it doesn't matter.
Warden, Counselors, thank you for coming here and listening to us. Yeah, I'm going to provide a very, like Craig said, a very high-level overview of the forestry sector in Ontario and specifically in Redford County. So, Ontario has 85 billion trees. Trees are a very renewable resource. For every tree harvested, three-take root, and only 0.5% of Ontario's trees are harvested annually. This information is starting to be spread out amongst the people in Ontario, specifically into the urban areas, so they understand the importance of our sector and how little impact it really has on things like greenhouse gas emissions and the environment. So, here we have, this is a very high-level overview, again, pie chart of the total Canadian forestry-related industry revenues, which are $63.2 billion annually. And the total number of employees, direct and indirect labor, you're looking at approximately Now, this slide pertains to the Ontario forestry industry. So, it's pretty much, pretty close to the same breakdown as across the country, but we're looking at about $15.7 billion in annual revenue and about 54,000 jobs, 54,200. So, the recent sector performance, generally, it's been reported that the performance in our sector within Redford County has been favorable over the past few years. We're seeing a higher percentage of revenues when compared to the rest of Canada, but our expenses are also a little bit higher. The nature of the businesses within Redford County, as you just heard from Chris, a lot of businesses are relatively small, and a lot of them are family-owned, without the resources or access to the capital that some of the large corporations have. Myself, being at Passways, we are now part of this big corporation, so I can honestly say it's a lot easier to get funding or money than it was before, when it was just Ray Passways' facility. So, kudos to Chris for being able to get all this funding for that initiative. For the most part, local businesses have become fairly integrated, somewhat specialized, and relying on one another. Again, as Chris said, we buy a lot of our raw materials from Chris and from a lot of the other mills in the area. We also employ a lot of other people, contractors, that come in to look after our hydro needs, our IT needs, our mechanical needs. So, there's quite a spillover effect, or trickle-down. Generally, it's considered that skilled trades are in short supply in the area and that reliable labor is somewhat difficult to attract and retain. That's a general comment made by the majority of business owners in this industry. Over 2,900 forestry and value-added wood-related jobs in Redford County. Capital investment mills, such as Hydeman's, have recognized the need to upgrade equipment in order to create increased efficiencies and productive capacity. Some of the larger mills have been making capital investments in order to remain competitive. Traditional financing can, at times, be difficult to obtain. It's not as easy as it used to be, but we do have some programs that can be of support in these situations. Just sometimes people have a hard time figuring out how to get access to these programs. Importance of pulpwood and residuals. Lots of pulpwood mills like that in Portage, the Ford, challenging for the local industry, so we have to drive a little bit further to get rid of our chips and sawdust. The reopening of Pembroke MDF has had a significant positive impact. They take a lot of that waste, which is great. There's also increasing opportunities with incend technologies as well, because they use the sawdust in waste for their, to create their biofuel. Local performance, though markets have improved over the past few years, they are still below what they were in 2004, with the sharp declines occurring after 2004. what they were in 2004, with the sharp declines occurring after 2007. In the last few years, the low Canadian dollar relative to the US dollar and the strength of the US economy has buoyed our sector. Sustainable forestry within Ranford County. Sustainable forest management with all public lands within Ranford County is certified. Harvests over the last five years have been significantly less than sustainable forestry can accommodate for the AFE and the OFFI. So, it's a Gomwun Forestry Authority in the Ottawa Valley Foresting. Access to logging in Algonquin Park seen as crucial for the local sawmill industry. So, these are some of the major challenges our businesses in this sector are facing, or causing increases in our cost of production. The Endangered Species Act, it can delay harvesting significantly, or to the point where people may not be able to harvest until the next calendar year, which is really difficult to deal with. WSIB rates have increased significantly over the last several years. Witness. Hydro costs are a huge problem. We're seeing anywhere from 30% to 40% increases in the last three to four years. So, again, that's a significant cause to absorb. Supply largely result in regulations, we're having a hard time getting to our material. Capital costs are getting more expensive, and as I said before, getting access to some funding can be difficult sometimes. Labor and training. Labor specifically with, we have an aging workforce that's gonna be retiring in the next four to five years, you're gonna see a lot of people retiring in the area, and a lot of younger people have left the area, so we're trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with that. And forest management. Canada-US softwood lumber dispute, I think Chris answered that fairly well. It does a negative impact on the whole for the industry, and it will trickle down, the fear is that it can trickle down into our county, specifically for Passways. We get a lot of SPF from the western provinces, and if those mills start closing down, my wood basket shrinks, so it causes a lot of headaches for everybody. So, in the short term, some within Ranford County not quite as significantly impacted, given domestic use and the value-added nature of many of our products, as Chris mentioned very well before. Opportunities, potential for biomass energy production, we've talked a lot about that at some of our meetings. Potential for value-added wood production, example, cross-laminated timbers, and that's something else that we brought up and kind of threw out there to think about. Continued support at the county level, which is why we're here, with respect to advocating to the provincial and federal governments for the recognition and support of this very important industry in rural communities such as ours. Importance of messaging, there has been quite a big initiative that started a few years ago to educate the people in the urban centers and in Ontario in general as to the importance of the forestry sector. We have 180,000 jobs are created either directly or indirectly, or through induced employment because of the forestry sector. And we also have been pushing the fact that wood products help fight climate change. And that wood builds 30,000 Ontario homes each year. And, thank you. That's the end of the presentation, I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Rob. Excellent. Councilor Business Keever.
Hi, Rob. You did good. I just wanted to thank you so much for coming and keeping us informed here in County Council. I know the wood business inside out backwards, but it's always nice to have somebody remind me, as everybody else in this room, about the significance of the logging and lumber business to Ranford County. So, you've done well, and you've presented us with a lot of facts that we can continue to make sure that our public is educated on the importance of this industry. So, well done, and thank you very much. And again, I offer, as I did to Chris, anything, this is dear to my heart, and it's so important, so anything that I personally, my minister, I can personally do, we want to offer them.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for Rob, Councilor Eno?
Two questions if I may. You mentioned Ensign, and I'm wondering, are there any other wood-related extensions of product use similar to what Ensign does that could be developed or attractive and clustered in this area as a, for research or technological advancement? Is there any you're aware of in the industry, in other jurisdictions that we should take a look at, at core things that bring to this area, given the number of species that are available for harvest and any other product mentioned?
I'm not aware of any business specifically, but it is something that we've talked about in our, in our meetings, and we hope to explore that more. So, I don't have an answer for you, but we are looking, we have been talking about that and looking into it. The laminated wood was one of the things that we talked about, and anything like Ensign that, you know, could come to the area. The hydro costs can be restrictive for some of these businesses, so.
If you have any, two questions, I think I've remembered, please correct me. The board foot log is, as Elsh would take it out of Algonquin Park, is something we will give about 750,000 wood annually, and they're present at a rate of 500,000, which is about 1% of the possible harvest area in Algonquin Park. And I just want to make sure those numbers haven't gone, the provincial allowance hasn't gone down. And then, secondly, I believe the industry in the county only takes out about 2% of what's allowed, could be harvested every year, so it's a very, it has a very minimal disruption, if you will, if someone, maybe if we're on the forest and the ecosystem of the county. Is that, would that be accurate, or is my numbers that bad?
Probably have that answer.
Yeah, usually it's for two meters cubed, I believe, and I could get you the exact numbers after, but I think you are in the right ballpark with about 700,000 meters cubed to 800 is allowable. We're, at one point, I think we're down closer in the 300s, I think we're getting up closer now into the 400s, so we're still not recognizing the full potential. And there's environmental and climate change benefits and arguments that we are not disturbing enough of the landscape, because we're not sequestering the amount of carbon that we could be if we were actually managing the forest to its potential.
Councilor Business Keever.
Just to, Councilor Eno's question, a lot of the designated areas are too expensive, too remote to access, so even though we have that number of 800,000, it's not cost-effective to try to reach it. So, the numbers look like we can, and, you know, you need the helicopter to get some of that stuff out of there, so I think, Chris, if...
I, it's probably more related to the regulations, as much as it's the regulations that make some of it cost-prohibitive, the Endangered Species Act in particular.
That's right, that's the other issue. So, they say yes, but then the regulations are so restrictive that it's not possible, it's not possible to move forward. So, it looks good out there, but it really isn't.
Anything further? Councilor Kingsbury.
Eno, you touched on, just briefly there about the youth leaving the area, how successful are you in pushing them back into this industry?
I'm about to find out. It's not been easy at all. Typically, there are a percentage of the youth that like the area, and they want to stay in the area, so we try, you know, hopefully we strike some gold there, we find a few individuals that want to work, and they work out well. And we've been lucky, I guess, there, but it's a challenge for the whole area. I imagine it's a challenge for all the businesses in Ranford County. It's becoming more of a bedroom county, like a bedroom community county, I guess, where people are coming to retire, too, they're not raising their families here like they used to, you know? So, I, I don't, that's almost a very broad question, I don't know how to answer, so.
Councilor Sweet.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. You mentioned 30,000 homes and that kind of problems on Ontario, I believe they're getting builders, I can't remember.
Right, I'm Ontario.
Ontario. I noticed the other day that they're building an 18-story building in British Columbia out of wood. And I also noticed that in Kingston, there was a 60 or 7-story building being built completely out of wood. That seems like a move in the right direction for the forestry industry. Is that a trend, or are they running into some legislative situations as far as the building code is concerned, or is there resistance to that, fine builders? It seems to me that that could take care of a lot of additional supply in Ontario. Are you running into resistance with that, or is it an accepted?
What I'm noticing is that it's becoming more of a trend, like you said, that the restrictions have been lifted, I think there's been a lot of engineering homework that's been done with the different species of wood they're using to build and build these structures with, and they're realizing that we can use wood, it's renewable, we're not smelting, throwing all this pollution into the air, making iron, you know, I-beams and things like that, right? I think the trend is going in the right direction there, for sure, and it will help us.
Thank you, Councilor Business Keever.
I just want to put another little twist to that. Our municipality has passed a bylaw that we do not build anything unless it's made wood, and I suggest that these chambers, everyone, if you consider that. You want to support the industry, pass that bylaw. Tell people, as leaders, that we're leading first. How can we ask other people to do it if we don't lead and do that? So, not that I'm putting a challenge out there or anything, but I think municipalities should be thinking, if you want to support what they're talking about, you have to step forward and speak up. So, we did pass the bylaw, we're the first in Ranford County, we continue to support that. Every time anybody comes to talk to us, we're building a playground, we said, gotta be by wood, no more plastic, and that's what we're doing. That's how you do it, guys, you gotta step forward and speak up. Anyways, thank you. That did feel like a challenge. It really did.
Anything further, Councilor Eno?
The committee, and through the word to the director, you may want to consider, Chris, you and I read that old FIA annual meeting, and there was a gentleman, an engineer from Vancouver, Michael Green. Exactly. He might be someone to bring into the area, you know, to bring to one of the major industries. He, I think he's led the charge of building over six stories of wood, and is quite, he's an expert, he's an engineer, he's a surfer dude, he's quite an interesting guy. A lot of green energy stuff, but he may be somebody that, you know, we could sponsor coming in for a show as a guest speaker, because he was quite, he was quite engaging and had quite a portfolio of condominiums and offices. He led the charge to get the, really, I believe, amended DC to go from four stories to six, and he's working on above six stories now, so he might be someone who could create benefit to this whole industry in Ranford County, which is not very...
Excellent. Anything further? Seeing nothing, thank you so much, gentlemen, that was awesome. Everyone okay? Yeah? Keep going here for a little while. Mr. Hutton, is there any correspondence?
I think, Madam Warren, all correspondence has been forwarded to appropriate committee.
Thank you. Seeing that, we will move on to Health Committee. Most of it, no? Okay.
I'd ask the vice chair to speak on my behalf, and I'm, would you indulge himself?
Yeah, before we get started, I should have said in my Warden's address, I hope everybody knows the tragic, the tragedy that struck Jameson Lass's home last Friday, and we're all so sorry for the loss of the interior of your house, Jameson. I think I can speak for everybody, that we wish you well in trying to rebuild, and I know that you had to go and buy socks and toothbrushes.
Underwear.
Underwear, so it's, I know it's a very difficult time, and by all means, just the fact that you came today is fantastic, and I'll then turn it over to you.
Yes, well, thank you, Madam Warren, thank you so much for your calls, it meant everything, you know? Just is still in shock a little bit, so we are meeting with the insurance people and trying to get our lives back. The most important thing is Les wasn't in the house. I was in Toronto, the conference for Onus, Les was not in the house, and he, we always argue about this, I always insist that he leaves the dogs in the house, and he didn't listen to me, he left them outside, and because of that, they're alive, and those four dogs mean everything to us, so we're all okay, we're gonna be fine, I get new clothes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kingsbury.
Thank you, Madam Warren. We, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend us following. Item number one, resident population, the most, 31st of March, 340, that's pretty consistent all the way through January, February. Item number two, Bell Canada, loss of service response, I believe Chief Nolan finally did, yet is a better of a pronouncement than an explanation. Item number three is meeting with the Ottawa Central Analyst Communication Center, which is Nolan, and you will notice in the package that changes are included. These changes will be closely monitored to ensure the best possible outcome for our communities. The impact of these changes will be reported regularly to our committee and council. Item number four, community paramedicine, community paramedicine funding, we would be happy to receive $609,000 from the Ministry of Health and Long-term Care. And if you hook up beyond, you'll see the breakdown of that, and I believe Ranford County is getting $231,700. Also, the most, in the report to influenza, we report the Champlain Local Integration Network awarded $40,000 to the county of Ranford Paramedics Services for a program for the period of February the 10th, March 31st, 2017. This funding will allow an additional 200 home businesses to be completed by the county of Community Paramedics through the County of Toronto County. Wellness spending, we are pleased with the Department of Health's wellness spending, we have a municipal banner for a senior in Kiprawa on Thursday of each month. Item number five, the Silver Change Challenge, this challenge is a friendly competition between Lannard County and the County of Ranford, and we are confident that 2017 is our year again, I guess it's up to us to make sure that happens. Item number six explains the long-term care's outbreak status for both homes. Item number seven, Ranford County and District Health, inspections of long-term care homes. Item number eight explains the foundations against for the long-term cares and homes that we can create out of our own. Item number nine is information on Mayor May's visit to Mayor Mische Lodge, and I think it was a very welcome visit. Item number 10 is the annual key Mayor Mische Lodge, it's being held in Mayor Mische Lodge Community Center on November the 10th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Admission is $10 each, and if anybody wants to advance at the reception desk, it will be available at the door. Admission is ten dollars each and Teddy Birchett will dance at the reception desk over the available door. Item number eleven is the media release from Voltria Manor, Resumes and Apple Trees. And I did do that and I did put some next to it. All of this, which is respectfully submitted by Chair Jonathan Neskey Moore and committee members Lynn Doncaster, Michael Dunne, who, Deborah Farr, Jane Gibson, Lauren Murphy, and myself, Mary Robinson. That's my report.
Thank you. So we will move back to number one, resident population. Questions, concerns? Number two, the Bell Canada, loss of service. Number three, the meeting with the Ottawa Ambulance Service. I'd just like to point out here that the Warden of Prescott and Russell sends his thanks to our chief, Mike Nolan, for his participation in this. I know it's not everything we wanted, but it's certainly a step in the right direction. Number four, the community paramedicine. Always nice to get some funding. Number five, the silver chain challenge. Counselor Eamon.
I object to the word friendly challenge, by the way. We're in the process of trying to plan something in Ranford. It likely be a first Saturday in June. It'll be a whiteboard council, so we're working on that with staff. So we're flirting with Chief Nolan and his staff as the difficulty. The, in broad terms, the idea is to invite people and then have a one or two workstations where they can log them in right away and let them engage. So we want to engage them physically, but at the same time engage them with the idea that they track their movements for the month and then beyond. So just some information out of.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything further? Number six, the outbreak status. Number seven, the inspections. Number eight, the foundation events. Number nine, Mayor May visiting Merrimishy Lodge. Number ten, the annual tool of TV. And number eleven, the residents tapping the trees. The report as a whole. Can I get a mover?
So moved, Madam Warren.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? How come I belong here? We move on to social services. Chair Robinson, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of county council, the Social Services Committee wish three quarters of recommended calls. Under information number one, the twenty sixteen seventeen Ranford County Social Housing Initiative waitlist comparison. We don't know the twenty sixteen applicants, which works out to eight hundred and ninety-one and new people waiting for assistance. The child care statistics for twenty sixteen seventeen, the statistics comparison, as well as the integration coordination statistics comparison. And just to note that resource funding and resource support for special needs is crucial for children, especially young children when they're starting out to take yet. The support they need while they're in the preschool system, their chances of being successful when they get into the regular school system is heightened quite a bit. Ontario Workstation Statistics. Number four, the Ontario Renovate Program. Again, it was an overwhelming success this year. The staff did very well, but the number of applicants received was enormous. The available funding was quickly allocated. And Ranford County Housing Corporation is no longer accepting applications to this program. And it's worth noting that last year under this program, we had a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars dispersed. This year, we had half a million and it's gone. Under resolutions, Home for Good, resolution number SS dash CC dash seventeen dash zero four dash two seven, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The staff get directed to explore opportunities for the Home for Good program and further that staff submit an expression of interest to the province of Ontario should there be viable projects with a ready partner. The background information is here. It identifies the four priorities that the government has identified. The key objective here is to help the people who would fall into those four categories to obtain and attain housing with support services. And that last support services is crucial because many of these people require other assistance other than housing. So the attention here would be that if successful, we'll partner with like-minded social service agencies throughout the county to make this successful for all involved. Number six, Innovation Evidence Capacity Building, IEC Fund. Resolution number SS dash CC dash seventeen dash zero four dash two eight, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The staff peruse pursuit. The staff pursue a grant proposal through the Innovation Evidence Capacity Building IEC Fund to establish priorities for the award of future housing infrastructure monies that will lead to the creation or redevelopment of housing for both affordable housing and social housing. Further, the proposal outlines the need to update the current housing needs and demand analysis. The information is there for you. Number seven, bylaws. Licensed home childcare policies and procedures. Resolution number SS dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash two nine, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that a bylaw be adopted approving the new childcare services licensed home childcare policies and procedures. There's quite a few policies there. I know there's a lot of pages involved. I hope that everyone had an opportunity to read them and look at them because they are very, very important for the overall success and safety of our children. Number eight, licensed home childcare services agreement, resolution number SS dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash thirty, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that a bylaw be adopted authorizing the county of Ranford Childcare Services Division to enter into an agreement with Austin Burson Killaloo and Anita DeRoche of Pepper for the provision of licensed childcare services. Licensed home childcare services. Any information is there? All of which is respectfully submitted by myself, committee members Eamon, Farr, Druss, Kingsbury, Murphy, Reiman, and staff.
Thank you. And we'll move back to the information item number one. Number two, the childcare statistics. Number three, the OWK's lived. Number four, I would like to reiterate what Chair Robinson said. This program was very well-used and we definitely owe our staff a debt of gratitude for their hard work in facilitating this. Number five. Number six, the IEC Fund. And number seven, the licensed home childcare policies and procedures. And number eight, the childcare service agreements. The report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please?
No.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you. And I will turn this over to Chair Stack with the Finance and Admin Report.
Thank you, Warden. Before I started, it doesn't look as long as it looks in the package, but it's really Jeff's report, so.
Excellent.
If he has any questions, we'll probably end up there most of the time.
Which we told him he wasn't allowed to do again.
We, your Finance Administration, wish to report and recommend as follows. Number one is your council remuneration. Two is a summary of the remuneration for Ranford County District Health units. Three, the federal gas tax legacy fund payment. Four, provincial infrastructure projects. Five is the moderizing of municipal legislation. And recently, we had discussion around alternates for county council. So at FA, we decided to send it back to staff for a more detailed look at it and bring the report back to FA again and then through the county council. Six is the Canada One-Fiftieth website. Seven, the audited financial statements for Ranford County Housing Corporation, Voltria Manor, Merrimishy Lodge, and the General Revenue Fund. And now it's carried into Jeff's resolutions. The first one, taking information technology corporate policy, resolution number FA dash CC seventeen dash oh four dash four six, moved by chair and seconded by committee. The county council approved the recommended changes to corporate policy IT dash ten dash email security and breach protocol and that the county council approved the new corporate policies IT dash eleven dash cloud-based community computing. And further, that a bylaw to amend, bylaw six-two dash zero three, information technology corporate policies and procedures for the county of Ranford be adopted at this session of county council. Number nine is the Ranford Area Administration Group Viking Agreement, resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash four seven, moved by chair and seconded committee, that the county council approved that a bylaw to provide Viking services for the Viking Montreal for a further five-year term effective August first, two thousand and seventeen, through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted and further the previous bylaw be repealed. Number ten is the two thousand and seventeen tax policy. A is tax ratios, resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash forty-eight, moved by chair and seconded committee, that a bylaw to set tax ratios for the county purposes and lower-tier purposes for the year two thousand and seventeen be adopted at this session of county council. B is the levy restriction, resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash four nine, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that two thousand and seventeen tax rates for the county of Ranford included a calculation to apply the municipal budgetary tax increase to the industrial and large industrial classes equal to fifty percent of the tax rate increase over the two thousand and seventeen notional tax for the residential class. Got all that? C is funding of a mandatory relief of maximum tax protection mechanism within the Municipal Act of two thousand and one. Resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash fifty, moved by chair and seconded committee, that the county of Ranford and its lower-tier municipalities continue the foregoing revenue approach to fund the capping requirements under the Municipal Act. And D is the tax rate reductions for prescribed property sub-classes for county purposes and lower-tier purposes. Resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash five one, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that a bylaw to set tax rate reductions for prescribed sub-classes for the county of Ranford and its lower-tier municipalities for the year two thousand and seventeen be adopted at this session of council. Number eleven, county of Ranford tax rate bylaws, resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash five two, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that a bylaw to establish the two thousand and seventeen tax rates for the county purposes be adopted at this session of county council. And the background is there. And you have an agenda. Ten, which is number twelve, is two thousand and seventeen tax policy capping program, resolution number FA dash CC dash seventeen dash oh four dash five five, moved by chair and seconded by committee, that a bylaw to adopt the optional tools for the purpose of administering limits for the commercial, industrial, and multi-residential property classes be adopted at this session of county council. By, A, increasing annual cap from five percent of last year's cap taxes to the ten percent of last year's cap taxes. And B, set an upper limit on the annual increase at greater of the amount calculated under A for ten percent of the previous year annualized CVA tax. And C, approve of a five-hundred-dollar threshold for increasing properties, thereby moving the properties with a billing adjustment of less than five-hundred dollars to their full CVA tax liability for the year. D, approve the options to exit the capping program immediately for the multi-residential property classes, all properties were taxed at full CVA in the previous year final tax billing. E, approve the stay-at-CVA tax option to exclude properties that were at CVA tax in two thousand and sixteen from the capping and hold that calculation in two thousand and seventeen. F is to approve that all properties in the commercial industrial class phase out of the capping program by moving towards a CVA tax over a four-year phase-out period since all properties in the broad class had a tax level of fifty percent or greater at the time of the previous year billing. Vacant land is excluded from the eligibility requirements, that all properties are within fifty percent of the CVA tax. And G, approve the capping protection be limited to only reassessment-related changes required to two thousand and seventeen. All respectfully submitted by myself, as Chair, committee members Doncaster, Dunne, who, Murphy, Tyke, Robinson, Sweet, and Miss Neskey Moore. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Stack. We'll go back to number one. Our council remuneration. Number two, the, yes, Counselor Eamon.
I'm just wondering, Madam Warden, who sets the rate for this committee?
That's a very good question. Counselor Eamon, can you leave it to that?
Sure. The Board of the Health Unit set the rate in accordance with, it's pretty much, it's pretty much years. The county policy that was asked for the Health Act or the moderizing of the Health Act calls for, calls for the Board and Corporation to utilize some policies and some services, and I can't be more specific after the document, similar to the auditors, the same auditors as the county of Ranford. So there is a package of policy and legislation that's transferred from the county of Ranford to the Health Unit. And so that, I think this is part of it, is it mirrors the, it mirrors the remuneration rate that's similar to the county of Ranford.
Subsection three.
Is this consistent with past practices that this is where the level has been in the past years? Or has it changed with this new council coming in?
To my knowledge, it's been a consistent practice. I was on the Health Unit six years ago, one, or eight years ago, and I think it was consistent. At that point, did it mirror the, did it mirror the numerations for rates of county of Ranford?
Counselor Sweeten and Counselor Doncaster.
I have to, yeah, I endorse what Counselor Eamon is saying. It has always followed the same structure as the county of Ranford in terms of per diems, half-days, at the time when there was half-days, and full-day per diems. When there's a full-day situation, has been there for three years.
Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I don't have the exact reference to what legislation is, but there is, and I'm just going off remembering that boards of health are required to pass a resolution or a bylaw, whatever the process is, for boards of health. With respect to remuneration of the board members, a stipulation that I understand and remember from that is that that remuneration cannot be higher than the local, the local, the lower-tier municipalities on our names. Maybe something we need to have a look at to make sure it's aligned with that, I don't think.
Can you speak to that?
I wouldn't dispute that. I think, I did remember something and that's why I think that. I'm in this area.
So I'm not sure after this discussion about the needs of the way that we asked that to look at this and educate this because I don't think I've ever really thought about it or heard it before now.
And of course, the chair is not here, so, Chair?
Thank you, Warden. Through you, Counselor Stack was up. Counselor Eamon was up as well. I mean, we can acquire the Health Unit, get their policy on it. I'm aware over the years that we've followed, I think they've followed us, but I'm not sure legally what requires them to do that or whatnot. So I'd suggest that we get their remuneration equivalent to our remuneration bylaw and bring that back here for education if so direct that we can do that.
Counselor Scott?
Yeah, I think just for education and information, that would be, would be good.
Counselor Eamon?
Yeah, I think part of the, there's two, two things happening here. One, I believe we're very serious about it. It's something that we ask for already. And secondly, I think there are more needs now because there are committees previously.
until about three years ago, the Health Unit, and I didn't have a regular schedule, because they didn't have committees. And so it's like that transformation has been more of an expenditure. And then secondly, I don't think this statement's been received by us in the past because we inquired about it at one point to make sure that we got here. So I think that's, that's what's causing some of the questions is, this is the information for you.
Thank you. I think so what I'm hearing is that we'd like staff to ask the board health to see their remuneration bylaw. Counselor Stack?
Yeah, and just for, for years, I think the biggest issue we discussed was the annual invoice, basically, right? And I mean, we put pressure on for years to try and make changes and have a little bit more influence, and that's the way we're used there. So we made that progress, and so there may well be more, more activity going on there. But I don't think any of us really had an exact understanding of what the remuneration was, or really looked ask them other before. So I think it's a good idea just to be able to.
Counselor Kinter?
Subsection three, Warden, just to further acknowledge, under the Municipal Act, I believe it's section 234, the county is required to report this on an annual basis.
Glad somebody can quote the Municipal Act. Mr. Hatton?
The Board was required to give us a report, which we were to report, and we have not been able to report, just to clarify.
Things have changed. Okay, I think we've deemed listed up.
Yeah, I know. All the past, the last 74 years, we take credit for this last year.
Okay. Number three, the legacy fund payment. Number four, the provincial infrastructure projects. Counselor Packett?
Thank you, Warden. It was actually myself that brought this up in the FA committee meeting, after hearing the information from this morning's meeting, and seeing that there isn't really a timeline or a short time to have this done, and request that this particular, number four be removed from the report and brought back to the committee for future discussion, and that's agreeable. Thank you.
Do I need a motion for that, Mr. Hatton? Yep. Moved by Counselor Packett. Can I get a second here? Counselor Robinson, any further discussion, concerns, which you have to make this? All those in favor? Excellent. We'll bring this back to May's Finance and Administration. Thank you. Number five, Bill 68. There was lively discussion about this, at least from Attorney Warden's caucus. Number six, Canada 150, the time, or the website. I encourage everybody to get their events uploaded. Counselor Love?
I guess ten councilors on your desk this morning, we placed a Canada 150 calendar for you to wear. Committee received these at our last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that everyone had one, that you could start wearing around the County of Brentford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Number seven, the 2016 financial statements. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly is, is asking me to remind all of you that you have to bring your stones in.
Doesn't sound right. Rocks.
Get, oh, sorry.
With the pending legislation.
Bring it back. Thank you for, oh my. Oh, come on, I lose control of these meetings. Number eight, the IT, the new IT policies. I know Counselor Sweet really wants to speak to this. Number nine, the banking agreement. Number 10, the tax policy. Don't make me make Jeff do this again. Number 11, the tax rate bylaw. And the addendum on the capping program. The report as a whole. Can I get a mover?
Still moved.
And can I ask for, all in favor, except for item number four, which has been removed? All is in favor? Opposed, if any? Excellent. And I will move us to Counselor Packett, unless people want a break. Do you want 10 minutes? Yes? I've seen a lot of nods. All right, so let's just have 10 minutes and we'll reconvene. To Counselor Packett and the operator, oh, sorry, Counselor Packett. He, he did tell me, I just, I missed him there.
Thank you, Warden, Murphy. We, our operations committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one, quotations and tenders. Number of tenders and quotations have been requested and received. Item number two, your monthly status, project status report, table here for your information. Item number three, winter operations. In March, the municipal, it's snow, always snow for the events. 25% higher than the same period last year. No surprise, I don't think. And material usage is there for your information. Item number four, fire communication study. Resolution number OPCC-17-04-22, moved by Chair, Second by Committee. The staff be directed to proceed with the preparation and circulation of a request for information for the provision of a new fire paging and dispatching system. Back term on that is there for your information. Just make note of the discussion points for all of county council to agree. There's also points of information provided by DONEX, Brentford County Fire Communication Study Report. There's 10 recommendations there for your information. Subsequent to the circulation of the DONEX report, the Brentford County Fireshows Association Commissioned an independent review of the report, and their comments are listed there for your information. Previously, all local municipalities were contacted for their comments, and you can see that their comments attached in appendix three. There's some important information, I think I'll just go through this, Warden, if you don't mind, because I find this very important. On the basis of comments provided by the local municipalities, appears that the paging and dispatching services provided by the Brentford ACC are adequate and meet the needs of local municipal fire service. However, the existing radio equipment is outdated and in need of replacement. There's also a desire to seek enhancements to the existing system to make it more robust and to provide monitoring, testing, and recording features as they occur. Staff suggested that request for information be sent out for the supply and installation of this, and we're probably coming back. Bylaws, County Road 37, Murphy Road, resolution number OPCC-17-04-23, moved by Chair, Second by Committee. The bylaw be passed except for the transfer of Part 1, Plan 49R-18932 to the County of Brentford, and that Part 1, Plan 49R-18932 be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. Item 6, County Road 5, Stone Road, bylaw purchase plan, resolution number OPCC-17-04-24, moved by Chair, Second by Committee. The bylaw be passed authorizing purchase of Part 4 on Plan RD112 in Melanie and Travis Smith for the sum of $1,900, and that the parcel land be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration and transfer documents. And the transfer documents. Item number 7, POW 2017-13, asphalt scratch coat and shoulder grappling, resolution number OP-17-04-29, moved by Chair, Second by Committee. The contract POW 2017-13 submitted by Greenwood Pavilion, Canberra, Ontario, for asphalt scratch coat and shoulder grappling in the amount of $571,927, plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract be passed. Department has advised that there's sufficient funds to complete the project as tender. Item 8, PWC 2017-07, rehabilitation of County Road 21, Beachford Road, resolution number OPCC-17-04-30, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that the contract PWC 2017-07 submitted by H&amp;H Construction Incorporated, Peddwell, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 21, Beachford Road, in the amount of $203,287, plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract be passed, and gain there sufficient funds to complete this project as tender. Item number 9, PWC 2017-08, rehabilitation of County Road 58, Round Lake Road, resolution number OPCC-17-04-31, moved by Chair, Second by Committee, that contract PWC 2017-08 submitted by H&amp;H Construction Incorporated, Peddwell, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 58, Round Lake Road, in the amount of $703,095, plus 54 cents, plus HST be approved, and that a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract be passed, and gain this confirmation that there's sufficient funds in the budget to complete this project as tender, all which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Booth, Love, McKay, Miller, Murphy, and Michael.
Thank you. We'll go back to information. Number one, the books and tenders. Counselor Reinhold?
Thank you, Warden. Through you, to Mr. Bellin. I was just wondering, have the priorities changed since the recently storms and washouts and culverts and whatnot, a bit of a disruption throughout the county? I was just wondering if any of your appropriations are going to be expanded or delayed or deferred in any way?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Reinhold and members of council. Short version is, we don't think so. We haven't had much damage to county infrastructure as a result of the recent flooding. Minor shoulder washouts has really been the extent of it for the most part. However, as the water recedes, we may find some other problems that we may have to attend to, and we'll bring those reports back to committee and council if necessary, it's necessary to do more work.
Thank you. Anything further on one? Number two? Number three, the winter operations? The winter that just kept on giving. Number four, the fire communications study? Thank you, Counselor Packett, for reviewing some of the background, I think it was very helpful. Number five, Murphy Road. Number six, Stone Road. Number seven, the asphalt scratch coating. Number eight, Beachford Road. And number nine, Round Lake Road. The report as a whole? Can I get a mover, please? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you. And last but certainly not least, I will turn this over to Counselor Sweet and the Development and Property Report. Are you ready? Are you ready?
Members of county council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report, recommend as follows. Information items, the first item is the industrial planning division activity track, you can find that on page 253. Item number two is the second residential units, the environmental registry can be found, information with regards to, can be found on page 254, and you have until May the, I pardon you, June the 1st, to make any comments to it. There's a number of issues that we've identified here that are concerns to the public in terms of secondary units, no development charges can be levied against the second unit, which is a concern. Parking is also an issue as well, and I'm not sure how that works in the rural theory, particularly of those who are accepting tanks, and you have to accept, accept, accepting tanks and so forth, in terms of that nature. So I think there's some opportunities, if you have some concerns, to register them there. Item number three, the Pick Wobbikin, Brentford County Economic Community Development Committee, all of that information can be found on page 258 and 259. As you recall, an annual U of Corporation was signed about nine months ago there, about the Pick Wobbikin for the County of Brentford, and out of that came a need or a desire to have a economic development type committee, and we'll leave that in hand to the board and the striking committee to put in place that particular committee. Item number four is the Rural Economic Development Program funding application, you can see there, we've applied for some $5,500, and you can read in that particular report portion of what is to be utilized for video, photographic content, web, social media, applications of print and all that, for this. Under item number five, regional material development program, it's a federal program, we're looking for additional money as well for various initiatives there. Projects, as you can see, for the culinary, the local culinary, tour promoting, promotion and marketing, the auto valet cycling roadmaps, development of the, of the trail management plan, and develop a map and guide for the armor, et cetera. Item number six, the Alva Valley Tourist Conference, I understand, which was held out in Spectacle Lake Lodge, which was very well received, I guess, I wasn't there when the tide up at the square, but I felt the Warden and the CEO were in attendance, and I think it was well well done out there. Travel Media Association of Canada, Melissa Marquette, heading out to Quebec City for the end of the event, promote our community and our region. Start a company, first intake of flight, this is an ongoing program for 18 and older, starting a business, and if they're qualified, they get up to $4,000 to begin that process. Our thanks to the Opey Anglo High School students, who, for two days, and I had a little bit of experience of that, during my 150th anniversary, I planted all of 150 trees, and my back was killing me. So 30,000 trees, and they have to be congratulated for doing that, so congratulations to them. A letter that we received, and you can find that on page 264, from the Trans-Canada Trail with regards to, to support for the, and it says there, CN, and the actual fact is not the CN, it's the CP Trail that, that runs from North Gate right down through the Alva Valley. We've directed staff to send a letter also to one Valerie Pringle, who, for your benefit, Valerie Pringle, was a CTV celebrity, who's in charge, who's the honorary chair of the Trans-Canada Trail, on behalf of our partners, just to promote our, of the, of the, which we want to see as part of the Alva Valley for the Trans-Canada Trail. Missing Lakes Old Vehicle Club, just to let you know, they, they've suggested that we extend the lease on our portion of the trail to, to the Missing Lakes Old Vehicle Club, and that letter can be found on page 265. Finally, I'm sure all those in the southern part of the county will be pleased, that the OPP station is up and running, and they're working out of a very modern building that is something that I'm sure that they thought was something that was, well, they're already seeing down in that portion, but... be seeing down in that portion, but you'll see there that the official opening is going to be held on June the ninth and everyone will be invited to attend that. Near Surface Disposal Facility, Environmental Impact Statement under Project Leave, you see the resolution there, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four twenty-six moved by chair seconded by committee. The County Council provided a letter of support to the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission for the draft environmental impact statement submission by the Canadian Nuclear Laboratories for the near surface disposal facility. You see the background that is there. There is a sixty-day appeal process, but we're pleased to offer our support from the committee. Integrated Tax Management Plan, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four twenty-eight, moved by the chair and seconded by committee, the County Council approves the Integrated Tax Management Plan. This was sent out to the general public and we received three comments back with regards to this particular initiative and it being integrated into the overall plan. CN update, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four twenty-nine, moved by chair seconded by committee. The County Council approves that any costs in two thousand and seventeen associated with legal review of the CN gifting agreement be taken from the two thousand and seventeen provision for uncollected funds account. You can see the background there, just more of a bit of an update. We were asked to work with CN on this, our staff were, and they are continuing to negotiate with CN on the acquisition of this continuing line. I wish I could give you a little bit more information other than to tell you that there's ongoing negotiation still with regards to the issues that have been identified going back a number of years, but still in place and we will hopefully have something for you in the month of May with regards to the issues that are currently out there. Scott continues, it says there to negotiate with CN, legal fees at age, as you can see, $103 including taxes and the date seventeen fees are $1,930 including taxes. Algonquin Trail slash Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Management Plan, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four thirty-one, it's moved by the chair and seconded by committee. The County of Rentford proceeds with the application to East Ontario Development Program and further that staff delay the hiring of the trails coordinator position by three months, in other words, starting July the first, not April the first, and use the savings from salaries and benefits within the forestry department budget to offset the cost of the consultant to the maximum of $15,000. The rationale behind that, as you recall, there was a business plan presenting that suggested that we should have a coordinator to deal with the workload as a result of the CP and slash CN coming forward. As I just alluded to, the CN situation is still ongoing and hasn't been finalized as far as where we're going with that. However, just a little bit further on down, you'll see the total amount of the applications for $12,000, which the county may be required to pay fifty percent or $6,000. And if the application is denied, then the full cost of consultancy will be paid by the company through the trails budget and CP real development. With savings being redeemed back from salaries and benefits lined up and by delaying the hiring of the contract staff will soon be. Other to that, at their April the fifth meeting or our meeting in two thousand and seventeen, the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Advisory Committee was advised that we, the Algonquin Trail Advisory Committee, was making this recommendation to development property to the County Council and asked if the partners would like to be involved in contributing to the cost of the consultant to have the management plan cover the entire length of the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail. The O B T R, O B R T Committee directed staff to team the costing for a consultant to prepare a management plan for the partners group. If the Algonquin Trail Advisory Committee was called into motion, the partners agreed to use the cross-chain percentage, which has always been in place since the agreement in principle was signed. You can see the cost of breakdown of Paton Cameron, Landham Cameron and Rentford County to the numbers that you see there. They agree wholeheartedly, as you know, one of the key components of this particular initiative going forward will be a management plan and I think it's important that we work together on this one to try and get continuity from Smithville all the way to Paton Cameron. The group, the partners were quite agreeable to this particular situation. The Zombie Run, item number seventeen, my favorite. Absolutely my favorite. Resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four thirty-one, moved by the chair seconded by committee that the County of Rentford proceeds with the Zombie Run fundraising opportunity and follow the correspondent that sent to Mr. Rick Mercer from the Mercer Report requesting his attention at the Zombie Run. Staff was approached by Tammy Blackmore, who is in fact the lady who looks after this particular initiative, to inquire if the county as well as the partner to receive proceeds from the Exombe Run scheduled for fall. Funds are raised by participants of the run and corporate sponsorship. The goal for this year's run, as you can see, is $25,000, which will be used to improve sections of the Algonquin Trail in two thousand and eighteen. Staff involvement will be minimal, support being needed from forestry and GIS clients and human resources, including media engagement to review and issue of tax receipts and staff attending at the event, including myself. I'm not quite sure if I'm going to be in costume or not. Some have suggested you don't have to go into costume, just find the way you are. Anyway, having said that, we met with Tammy Blackmore February twenty-second, table's a letter that was sent proposing to Rick Mercer, the Mercer Report, the chairs on C D C, telling him that an invitation to have Melissa be part of the show. I don't think I can elaborate anymore on that. That's what it is. Summer Company Agreement, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four twenty-seven, moved by the chair seconded by committee, the County Council passed a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to sign in the new, our Ministry of Economic Development and Global Summer Company Agreement. This is an ongoing initiative that we have. Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Co-owners Agreement Letter of Understanding, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four thirty, moved by the chair seconded by committee, the County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a letter of understanding with the County of Landham, township Paton Cameron to review the co-owner agreement in two thousand and thirty-one. You can see the background to that, the suggestion when we take a look at reviewing this every so often, then it came up with fifteen years, that partners agreed with this particular initiative and instead of admitting, they agreed that the partners agreed that a table with letter of understanding be prepared endorsed by the chief administration officer and the warden from all three municipalities. Somewhere, I might have an attendee. So, this attendee is in support of Highway four seventeen extension, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh four thirty-nine, it's moved by the chair and seconded by committee. The County Council approved the appearance of the delegation of the County of Rentford before the city of North Bay in order to obtain an endorsement for the four lane of seventeen and further, it is recognized, there's a benefit of developing a relationship with the Board of the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, FANOM, and other municipalities and approved that a delegation tend to make ten to twelve, kind of general meeting in North Bay to explore further endorsements of the Highway seventeen extension program proposed by the County of Rentford. And further, that the County Council approves an allocation of up to $5,000 from the County of Rentford provision of anaesthetic funds supported by specific resolutions for activities of force seventeen advisory committee in the coming year. You can see the background, I can go into it a little bit more, but basically its intention is to continue moving forward, the momentum that we've been in place for the last two years to try and get as much support as we possibly can to expand this highway and we suggested that viable federal provincial governance of this will be an initiative that we should really tackle, getting as much support as possible. I want to emphasize that this is not a conference that the chair and perhaps the warden is going to, this is an opportunity to take forward an initiative that, an opportunity for us as come as far as this is concerned. So, this is not a conference as such, it's a meeting of those in Northern Ontario seeking support for the issues that we've been working with and moving forward on four seventeen. All of which is submitted by myself as chair, members of Ewan, Grubbs, Love, McKay, Miller and Murphy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go back to information item number one, the Activity Tracker. Number two, the second residential units. Number three, the Pickwrecking and Rentford County Economic and Community Development Committee. Very exciting to continue with this. Number four, the RED program. Number five, the EODP funding. Number six, the OVTA AGM. I was very, very pleased to attend this. Counselor Love was actually in my municipality for a meeting and I drove right through hers. I don't know who said that Spectacle Lake Lodge was in Berry's Bay, but it's not, it's in Nipissing and I thought I was lost. Number seven, so congratulations to the OVTA, by the way, that was very well attended AGM. Number seven, the Travel Media Association of Canada. Number eight, start a company. Number nine, the tree plant. I thought I was being invited to this. I thought I was supposed to-
You were busy with medical.
Oh, I wasn't, okay. Apparently I got ahead of it. But congrats, I agree, to the students of Opiambo and to Jack and his crew at Heritage Reforestation. Number ten, the Trans Canadian Trail. Number nine, the snowmobile club, or sorry, eleven, the snowmobile club. Number twelve, the OPP facility. Counselor Ewan and I and Mayor Edie had the opportunity to see it when they were moving in, it's quite the facility. Number thirteen, the MSDF impact, or environmental impact statement. Counselor Don, Counselor Kingsbury was first, Counselor Kingsbury.
I just comment on this, Madam Gordon, I know that this facility is badly needed for the removal of some of the buildings that they have on site, makes complete sense. I guess what the concern is that the material that they're going to be trucking in from DG from out of the province and storing here, I believe in the past, a request was made for material to go back that way and was denied, but now all of a sudden, we're going to take material from other provinces and bring it in store there. I think that's a concern for, I know some of our residents.
Well said, I've had a lot of emails, when I say a lot, I mean a lot of emails about this issue. I think that supporting their environmental impact is the right way to go and I know that Counselor Doncaster has a very good handle on the situation and would probably like to speak to that.
Was that my cue?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As the second largest employer of Rentford County, C N L plays a critical role in the economy of Rentford County. As Canada's premier nuclear science and technology laboratory, C N L contributes to and is a world leader in the peaceful use of nuclear technologies. One of C N L's short-term goals is to revitalize the laboratories. One of C N L's key responsibilities, responsibilities is their mandate to deal with Canada's latest nuclear waste as a result of the ACL operations over the past sixty-plus years. This waste comes from years of innovative projects that ACL has been involved with and have benefited all Canadians and the world in one way or another. In order for C N L to revitalize and move this site to an updated state-of-the-art facility, C N L needs to remove all the older structures to make room for the new facilities. All the legacy waste, as well as the waste that comes from its revitalization projects, needs to be dealt with in a responsible and safe manner. C N L has proposed an NSDF, near surface disposal facility for the management of this waste. We have some of the brightest minds in the nuclear industry anywhere in the world, right here in Rentford County. These people work and live in Rentford County and have a personal stake in this project. Is this oversight enough? No, clearly isn't. Let's not forget that all of the ongoing operations of the C N L site, as well as this proposed project, fall under the oversight, the regulations and ultimately approval of the CNSC. C N L presented to this council as well as DEPRR council on January twenty-fifth regarding the near surface disposal facility. Since that time, DEPRR council has been working to gain a better understanding of how the decommissioning of the existing facilities and the commissioning of a one million cubic meter near surface disposal facility will integrate into the fabric of our community and the natural environment. It became evident very quickly that the Town and DEPRR required more experience and extensive knowledge relating to the approval process and enhance our capacity to make a sound, educated and informed representation to the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. Council has directed that James Ayers be engaged to assist representation before the CNSC. James is a certified specialist in environmental law and has extensive experience with the environmental assessment process and environmental projects specifically in the area of landfill approvals. To assist Mr. Ayers, Dr. William Huber Schmidt, as an experienced science and technology specialist in the, in science and technology and the area of nuclear waste management, will peer review the environmental impact statement submitted by Canadian Nuclear Laboratories to the CNSC. The Town and DEPRR is the proud home of Canadian Nuclear Laboratories and as such, we take our role as the host community very seriously. As the host community, DEPRR also recognizes its responsibility and obligation to work with C N L, local and stakeholder residents and neighboring communities to ensure that the legacy of atomic energy Canada Limited and of Canadian Nuclear Laboratories remains a positive one for today, tomorrow and for future generations. That's why I respectfully ask and recommend that all members of County Council come together in support of the Town and DEPRR as the host community of C N L, to support a representation to the CNSC, requesting an extension to the sixty-day commenting period so that a comprehensive peer review on the technical merit of the environmental impact statement can be completed and subsequent submission may be made to the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. And I have just an add-on to this resolution within the warden's intelligence that I was on the business.
Thank you, Counselor Doncaster, very well said. Anything further? Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Warden, just with point of information on Monday evening in Stolt, I attended C N L's first public information meeting. There were two items that they wanted to discuss for the public, the one was near surface disposal facility and the other was the intumement of the M P D station at Grolton. They had eight staff in attendance and many of the billboards, as you well, were for these presentations. It was well received, it's too bad that there were only seven members of the public in attendance, but I believe there are five more in general throughout the county and I would encourage everybody to attend them and they certainly have had their rise support because they are a significant pillar for people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stock.
Thank you. A couple of weeks back at the C N L stewardship environmental committee, I'm going to speak more to the transport of waste because, you know, I was asked, I guess, to be on that committee, I was on it for about five or six years before as a representative of the lower end of the valley. Valley, more of a distance from CNL. And we've had a lot of activity, I would say, in terms of comments, questions, inquiries, and air prayer about the transport of the waste and that, so we get into a discussion in the committee. And I said to them that there's a need, I think, to have a real, frank, public discussion about it to eliminate the fiction from the fact in terms of what's going on. And, you know, in that discussion that day, he said, you know, that the waste being transported is low-grade waste, and it has been being transported for the last thirty years or so till now, but, and, you know, barring any kind of details like at 2:00 Thursday afternoon, a truck is going to be going to air prayer, you know, obviously for security reasons, they're more than happy to have discussions and talk specifically about that. Now, what came out of that, too, the meeting Jim, you were at the other night on May 7th at 6:00, 8:00 AM, and it's Smith Center's a public forum, and CNL is willing to be there. And one of the things we want to address more specifically is the transport of the waste because our community has a lot of questions and a lot of fiction and, you know, it's an emotional issue. People can get down the wrong path pretty easy on it. So at that meeting, I asked them about that, and they also said, willing to go to any one of the municipalities to have the same kind of session. They've set so many up, but they're willing to meet anywhere with any council or any public group.
Thank you for that. Yes, I've got people in my community also that are concerned about, you know, the import, more so just being on our roads with 41 and 60 with that connecting link. So, and I agree, I think it's, we need to sort out the fact from the fiction, and it's about engaging as many people as we can in these, in these open sessions that CNL is putting on throughout the county. Councilor Gibson?
Thank you, Ward. One thing to keep in mind, I've always been an advocate that if the various provincial federal governments have passed resolutions with respect to harm, that we put this harm, the potential harm, in perspective. And what we're talking here is potential harm, whereas an actual fact, real harm, if you look at the city of Ottawa, there just must be millions of gallons of sewage down the Ottawa River, I suppose, suggests that maybe we can focus our attention elsewhere.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilor Stock?
Yeah, just as an invitation, Nick Smith said we'll see over 200 people, so, you know, we, and I in fact got emails from CBC, they're going to be there in attendance, and a couple of other groups across the county and the province actually, so we're expecting some. But, you know, it's not restricted there. I'm embarrassed, I'll kind of say there's no one there to walk into.
Thank you. Councilor Reinhold?
Thank you, Ward. I just want to point that CNL were at the Trumpet Reliance Club Hall last night, and they gave, they did their regular presentation, I think it's the third round that they've done so far. That's very similar to what was done at the Stoll, with Mary Gibson. And there was a fairly large number of people there. There was a good interaction between the town people and the CNL folks. They're very well versed in their, you know, on all the subject matter that was applied out there. Very open, and if there was a question that they don't, can answer, they will get back to. They're very, very supportive and helpful. They also have attended our council meeting last week and provided us a presentation of a similar thing. So very gay, very focused, and are very much in support of this. Having worked there for thirty years, it takes a lot of, to get through the CNSC, the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission, to reach that point, to, you know, to get close to this point, it takes a lot of hurdles to jump. So if the CNSC become, is in favor of this, then it certainly is my support.
Thank you. Councilor Stock, Councilor McKay?
Sorry, just a correction, I'm going to be replied, it's the 7th and the 29th, it's the 8:00 PM, Thursday.
Wait, keep on that. Councilor McKay?
Thank you. I haven't listened to Councilor Doncaster's request from the Towne &amp; DEPRVER as the host community for this. I tend to feel that while I do support going forward with what we have, like the property development of their restoring of their waste, I do respect the need to support the host municipality on their request to ask for us to withhold our support, if I'm understanding it correctly, till they do a peer review. Because I think as County Council, we should certainly recognize the need for any independent municipality to request our support for them on their needs and their requirement to do a peer review, which shouldn't change anything. So I'm in support of DEPRVER's request, and I'm not sure where that thing kind of going on, but I wanted to say that.
This will be coming in the business from Councilor Doncaster?
It's almost around time, sorry.
It's okay. Uh, Council, okay.
Anything?
Anything further? All right. Number fourteen, the Integrated Pest Management Plan. Number fifteen, the CNL update. Sixteen, the Albuckra Trail, Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Management Plan. Number seventeen, the Zombie Room. Councilor Robinson, sorry, I missed you there.
I have talked about Zombie Room.
Okay.
Tommy Blackmore have discussed this with me as well. It is a very, very well-run event, and it's been going on, I want to say five years, depending on for that. And there's like kids involved, the whole, the whole gathering. I really think that Councilor Sweet should be there and they will dress you up. You don't look like a zombie now, but you will. This is so exciting that a group of people have adopted our trail already, and I'm really told that this is the beginning with many, many more who have, who, you know, have a vested interest in our success throughout the county, and I just congratulate Tommy and the hordes of volunteers that will be involved in this.
Very nice, thank you. Anything further? Councilor Eamon?
Perhaps Councilor Stock and Ward are good with the, with the Councilor.
What? Oh!
Councilor Sweet?
Well, there's seventeen other people sitting around here, and the whole country's staff there, too. It's a fundraiser.
We can make it a team bonding exercise.
I mean, it costs more than $20 to attempt to from being part of that. I think we've gone really, as, as, as Councilor Robinson has said, it is a tremendous opportunity to support the trail, and that is for sure. And hopefully, our friend Mercer in front can see the benefit of this, and that he in fact comes up. It's the sort of thing that would appeal there, and who knows? Let's see if that could happen. He's been on before, on the Giant Pumpkin Race out in Laurentian Valley, and so he knows the area, and so hopefully he can, he can seriously clear to include this in his show or his, whatever. But anyway, everyone's invited to the Zombie Room.
I think Councilor Eamon has to add a zero to that donation. Councilor Robinson?
Well, you know, it is, it is a five and a 10K round. I'm sure we could find 10 people representing the county who could do a relay, at least a kilometer each. I'd show their support.
I love that idea. I'm in. Councilor Sweet?
I understand you can actually walk as well, you don't have to-
The backpedaling starts already.
Oh, boys, smack talk all around. All right. Thank you for those comments. Number eighteen, the Summer Company Agreement. Number nineteen, the Ottawa Valley Comowners Agreement. Number twenty, the Addendum Regarding the Support for Highway 17 Extension. The report as a whole? Can I get a lift, please? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Wonderful. One, two, yeah. I think before we continue on, we'll have lunch because I'm assuming that's probably what we thought. It's a hot lunch. So we'll, we'll meet back here in half an hour?
What'd you do? Still quiet.
I'll say 20 minutes because then everybody will be back here in half an hour. Welcome back, everyone. Everyone has lunch? All right, so when we last left you, we were at Bylaw's. Please cut to the bandwagon. Councilor Robinson?
I have to work. I found myself, thanks to my Councilor, the Bylaws listed on item 11 and attached here to a schedule date on the County Council agenda dated April 26th, 2017, EDV, and rest three times a month.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing none? Excellent. Notices of motions. Members' written motions. New Business will, we can start, Councilor Love, I think, will be quite quick.
Thank you, Madam Ward. The mission of Bernadette McCann House for Women is to provide safety, support, and education to women, children, and those experiencing abuse, and to work for change that will end with abuse. Bernadette McCann House is currently inviting participation in their Stand Up Against Violence campaign. They're asking supporters of this campaign to agree to have their picture taken, holding signs that say "Stand Up Against Violence." The photos will be posted on their website, on Facebook, and in the local newspapers. Their goal is to get 1,000 people in Redford County to stand up against violence. I would like to ask County Council and staff if they would be willing to support this important campaign with a voluntary group photo, possibly at our next County Council meeting. Thank you, Madam Ward.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Is there anything special we have to do, Mr. Hutton, or can we just have a photo taken and send it?
We can put it on the agenda for next, if we get directed by Council to do that.
Thank you. Excellent. Anything, anybody opposed to that? I didn't think so, I knew that'd be quick. Do you want to leave FCM?
Go ahead.
Actually, so, yeah, we don't leave Councilor Doncaster till last because this is-
Well, there might be a lot of discussion, so I thought I'd just get through some of these.
Well, thank you, Madam Ward, I forgot actually to mention, I spoke to Ward and Jim Hutton a couple of weeks back and submitted my resignation as the only representative of the FCM, and the timing now, for two reasons, when the conference is in May in Ottawa, and that's when they'll appoint people to JES again, and June, I'm sorry, and, and we need to have someone there who can, can commit the time and energy to get involved. I think it's very important to Redford County and the 17 municipalities, and I was just sort of getting into it and enjoying it, and maybe don't know, sometime I'd like to look at it again, but for obvious personal, family health reasons, I just can no longer commit the time to it.
Thank you, and, yeah, thanks for taking it on, Walter, and I think we all understand that, you know, family comes first, and we're sorry that you, that you're not going to serve. What I would like to put out to all of Council is, if you are interested in sitting on the board of, or being a member of FCM, would you please come forward to Mr. Hutton, then Rose and myself, and just let us know because we will be doing a striking committee meeting in May, and bringing it forward to the May County Council. I recognize the time is short, the conference is actually, I think, June 4th, 4th, 5th, so it'll have to be tight timelines, Mr. Hutton, if you want to-
It's first to 4th.
Oh, it's first to 4th. Okay, so it'll be very tight timelines, but I absolutely agree with Councilor Stock that we need a seat at this table, and so I'll be very excited to see if any of you or a whole bunch of you would like to take on this endeavor. All right, with FCM, I'm going, one of the things I missed, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Gibson?
Thank you, Ward. Just an update from New Business from previous council meeting. On this coming Monday, the Technical Advisory Committee of the Municipal Partners and Housing Building Corps Development Branch will be examining the proposed change to the building corps with respect to septic tanks. I did some more investigation into the proponent, and in fact, the proponent, the Ontario Onsite Wastewater Association, has three of their members who are members of the Technical Advisory Committee. So this adds a whole new definition to foxes in the hen house. So we'll just have to wait and see what happens there. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Councilor Robinson?
I think that'd be quick as well, Ward. I just, I did give Craig a heads-up tonight, but apologize, I should have lent you a bunch of time. We're just struggling in Laurentian Valley, trying to figure out what we should be, how we should contribute to this council business, so I'm wondering if, I'm looking for some suggestions, other municipalities, have you come up with something that could steal your idea? You know, I haven't seen the council, I think that Craig seems to have that, so you take a look. Is this a struggle for us? We-
Um, I know, we are doing a photo book of what Bonneher Valley looks like. Not a fancy photo book, just a, you know, a pictorial of what it looks like today. Other things that came down in, if you have a gavel from your, a small gavel from your municipality, you can have a plaque put on it, that's what we did in Eaganville with all your councilors' names on it. Craig, yeah?
My?
Nope, please, please.
Thank you, Ward. Think you can hear me? Oh my God. This is not my grandma. So this is, this is the time capsule.
You cannot put your grandma's ashes in a bag.
Or bring them to work. Bring your grandma to work. This is the time capsule, so you can get an idea what it, what the size of it is. Now, what the company has provided is what the sample of, and I think Rose has provided basically the size, that's roughly the size of the large Ziploc bag, I think we determined.
Mine was a little small.
Yeah. Just a little.
Just a little small, okay. So that's roughly the size, and that we can get everything in there, but if you see, it's not that large, so if we have 17 hats or footballs, we're not getting them in here.
Right.
So a gavel, if it's small, might be an idea. What Rose and I have talked about is something printed will likely last 50 years. A CD or a thumb drive, a set tape or an 8-track or something won't make it 50 years, right? Just the technology won't be there unless it's in a Bonneher museum, so that's where we're suggesting something printed, and then we can put the right filter cloth and the baggage and everything else that goes along with that.
Thank you, Craig. Another idea was your township flag.
Oh yeah.
The flag from there. Yes, Councilor Reinhold?
One of the things we're thinking of doing was putting in our, sort of like putting in the business card, the current government.
Something simple.
Councilor Love?
I thought there was some concern about the paper, that it had to be acid-free paper.
I think for photos, yes, but I'm not sure for business cards. We buried an Eaganville leader at ours, and it's on Eaganville, it's on their normal, oh, Sean Chase is giving me the stink eye back there.
Thanks, Ward, if I can. If you have certain, there are certain, yeah, acid-free is great, but there are also some transparency sheets and whatnot that come with the kit that we can modify if you give something that's borderline, we can work with that. But if you can find, if you're doing photo, then acid-free. Mr. Beakley makes a good point, the reflections of the century book would be a good addition.
It won't fit.
We could, yeah.
It's huge. It's huge. So does that, does that help you at all?
Oh, yeah, I thought my dad was going to give me that. Oh, it's small.
Okay. All right, then, so that's, we've got a lot of things to mention. I did forget also to send our condolences to Deb Zaro, her father passed away a couple of days ago, so we sent our condolences to her family. Before we get to, does anybody else have anything except for Glenn? Okay, I've got a couple of things. We had a couple of committee meetings during committee week that were a little lean on members. I would ask that if you cannot attend a committee meeting, would you please let Rose and Jim and I know, as far as, I realize people get sick, but as far as-
and I know, as far as, I realize people get sick, but as far as in advance as possible. We almost didn't have a quorum at one meeting, and if somebody wanted to step out to get a cup of coffee or use the washroom, we had to sort of put the meeting on hold, so that would be greatly appreciated. I have one other request from the United Way of Rentford County, from Ms. Bonnie Schreier. She is working with the Accessibilities for Ontarians Partnership, she's the coordinator of this, and she would like to propose a county-wide initiative of awareness into a movement of involving people of all ages and abilities to make Rentford County accessible, accessible-friendly. So for me, this is her speaking, by the way, the logical start, starting point is that the top of the county and city is to wear and do, to contact each of our own, of their own municipalities. Once we have the support and assistance from the county and their accessibility committees, we need all BIA's, Chamber of Commerce, and business networks to identify three stores or businesses that would benefit most of a portable ramp and door, portable doorbell. We need in each community a champion store to order and sell at cost or donate to the three selected stores a doorbell that the store installs. We need school workshops to agree to measure and build ramps according to the Ontario Building Code. We need local hardware stores in each community to donate the ramp materials. We need it all to be completed for September for the United Ways Campaign kickoff. As the partnership coordinator, I would connect and oversee the project with willing participants in conjunction with the town and accessible, accessibility committee reps and the local media. What I will ask is that Rose send this out to each municipality, so you can review it with your own councils. Okay, that's, any questions on that? All right, and now we will move, last but not least, Glenn, take it away.
Thank you, Warden. As reference to your preamble, as an addition to the letter of support recommended by, and approved by county council and recommended by DNP, and I guess procedurally, I guess I probably could have done this as an amendment to that, but it just, my brain wasn't working in that manner at the time, so my proposed recommendation is that, and I'll just read it again, I think I've given everybody a copy, but be resolved that the council of County of Rentford supports the Canadian Nuclear Oratories and the benefit Chopper Room Oratories has provided and continues to provide globally nationally and internationally, and that Rentford, the council of County of Rentford supports the Townendee River as the host community of CNL with respect to the proposed NSDF and review of the environmental impact statement for the near surface disposal facility. This would include the process of Townendee River as command to conduct a comprehensive peer review of the NSDF and make a subsequent, sound, educated, well-informed representation to the CNL Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission.
Thank you. So this was moved by Councilor Doncaster, seconded by Councilor Stack. Discussion, questions? Oops, sorry. Discussion, questions, Councilor Harrow?
Well, I have one question. You state that you're going to do a review. Would it be a little more prudent for us to wait until that review is done and you come back to county council for your support?
Councilor Doncaster?
So part of the process, so we have hired, as I mentioned, an environmental lawyer and Dr. Lou Gubrischmidt, who technically will do that review. We, we will be asking the CNSC for an extension to the 60 days, and I think that's prudent that we do that. I think that there is time, we have till May 17th, and I believe Mr. Gubrischmidt and Mr. yours are working diligently on doing that, and our goal is to, is to have that done before that point in time. We will ask for that extension. I think part of, part of the communications that we will send to the CNSC right now is the fact that, similar to the County of Rentford, we are supportive of the activities of CNL. However, the, what we want to make clear is that that support is not just a blanket support, that we take our responsibility very seriously, and we will hold them accountable for what they do, how they do it today and in the future. So just to answer your question specifically, I don't think there's, there's any need to delay anything. To be perfectly honest, we don't think the CNSC will give us an extension, but I think it's, I think it's prudent for us to ask, and I think seeing the deadline of May 17th, I think it's important that the communities in Rentford County certainly put something in front of the CNSC. This isn't the end of the process, this is the first step, the environmental impact statement, and there will be other opportunities down the road for us to, to provide input on the process, and in fact, even, even during delegation in person in front of the CNSC.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Passes? Ah, sure. We do not have a closed meeting this afternoon, confirmatory bylaw, Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Harrow, the bylaws confirm the proceedings of the council of County of Rentford as meeting held on April 26, 2017, we now number game threats three times in the past.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Excuse me, one minute. Council, who has 1:06 PM? I, I found out today that they bet on what time we adjourn. Who's the big winner? Chicken dinner? Oh, nobody wants to fess up. I hate Paul. You're better than that, Paul.
I know. I'm Paul, thank you, Warden, for Jack.
Oh, is there money on this? I want in. I can rig it. All right, I'll, I'll call for an adjournment. Moved by Councilor Love, seconded by Councilor Reinhold. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? I didn't think so. Everybody have a, have a great afternoon.